Good evening and thank you for joining us for the regular meeting of the Akron Public Schools Board of Education for Monday, September 14th, 2020. Roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar.
Here.
Mr. Alexander.
President.
Ms. Autry.
Here.
Mr. Bravo.
Here.
Dr. Hall.
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Here.
Mrs. McKittrick.
Here.
Thank you.
And if everyone could please mute your microphones and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all so much. At this time, I'd like to open it up to our board for community and school reflections. If you'd like to go after the first person gives me the high sign, please line up in the chat and I will make sure to acknowledge you. Dr. Hall, were you raising your hand? Okay.
Not yet. I saw Ms. McKittrick in the queue first, so I'll wait until after she's done.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McKittrick and then Dr. Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Very simply, I'd like to extend my condolences to the family of Glenda Roden, who died last week. She was with APS for nine years. She was a child nutrition helper, so our condolences to her family. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. McKittrick. Dr. Hall?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. So I just wanted to say thank you to those in the community that may be watching or with us tonight for all of your time. I know I've had some lengthy conversations with a number of parents in our community the last several weeks. And again, just want to thank you for taking the time to talk to me. I know that you've got a lot on your plates and I appreciate the time that you've taken, I'm sorry, taken to engage me. I am the better for it. I'm the wiser for it. And so I just want to thank you again for your time and look forward to working with you as we move forward. That's all I've got, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mansfield?
Hi, there was something that I neglected to mention at the last meeting that I just wanted to point out. I had the great honor of meeting with the Sage Company, thanks to Joshua Allen in Student Services reaching out. They donated 150 backpacks to the district. I believe it was specific to Mickey Bright. Oh gosh, I hope that's right. No, that's wrong. David Hill? Oh my gosh, I can't remember now. It was in my head and now it flew out. But it was specific to the school. And one of the reasons they collected for that, that company collected for the backpacks is that one of their staff members who had never forgotten where she came from and she wanted to donate back to her school. So they gave 150 backpacks. I believe those will be used as attendance incentives and I just wanted to thank them. They were lovely. You know, there's so little of the thanking that we get to do in person these days with COVID and to take the time, to be able to take the time masked and very nicely distanced in our, in our interaction. But it was so nice to see. And you know, if you look at our donations, every board meeting, the kindness of the Akron community doesn't go unnoticed by this board. So I just wanted to, to thank them personally. I meant to do it at last meeting and it was just so crazy. So thank you.
Thank you. I was trying to look real quick too. I didn't find it in time. Anyone else would like to share some community or school reflections from the board? Ms. Autry?
Yes, hi. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to acknowledge the parent groups that are still out there active in supporting schools and particularly the Book to PTA who received a $5,000 grant from the Akron Community Foundation to help support grandparents and other family members who are raising children within the Akron Public Schools and Book to Cluster. And they'll be supporting those families with gift cards to Walmart. So just a thank you to the Akron Community Foundation and the Book to PTA Board who continues to chug along and support our students during this pandemic.
Thank you. That's fantastic. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to the next portion of our agenda. Thank you so much for sharing. We do have several requests to address the board this evening. We have at least four groups of folks with us that would like to address the board. And I was explaining to each of them earlier. First of all, I'd like to echo Dr. Hall's sentiment. Thank you so much for reaching out, for sharing your questions and your concerns. We appreciate you being part of this board meeting. And we're happy to hear from you tonight. As is typical with our board meetings, our policy is not to respond while we're in the meeting. So we just want to hear from you. We're going to listen. We will follow up if necessary with you individually. If you're going to mention any specific students or staff by name, we ask that you make a request to do that in executive session and we'd be happy to try and accommodate you for that. We want to protect our students and our staff. You have three minutes to address the board and Mr. Pendleton, our CFO, is going to help keep the time and he'll let you know when you have about one minute left.
Sorry for interruptions during that.
So he'll help us keep time. And again, thank you so much for being here. So at this time, we have, we'll start in order here. We have Mr. Max Thomas and Ms. Holly Christensen. Thank you for joining us and your time will begin whenever you are ready to start.
Thank you, President Bravo, members of the board, Superintendent James, Ms. Brady, and everyone else who is in attendance. I think there are several parents who are here to speak on the same issues that Holly and I are, which have to do with special education. I'm going to try to confine my remarks to two points. First, some of the ways that the district currently, its current remote learning model is failing to meet its legal requirements to students on IEPs. And I'm not going to mention any specific students on this. I'd like to address this to all students in the board, in the district. And secondly, on the positive note, this is the time for innovation and I want to urge the board to consider innovative solutions to this problem. We don't want to mire down in conflict. We want to make this work for everyone, including these students. Simply put, for students with special educational needs, remote learning is a catastrophe for most of them. It's not ideal for neurotypical students or students who are older and able to access the curriculum on their Chromebooks, but it doesn't work for students who, among other things, require paraprofessional support one-on-one in order to access the lessons. And yet now they're being able to do this at home without trained assistants and without a situation where there are many distractions, more than there would be in the classroom. It does not work for students who do not have the ability, for physical or cognitive reasons, to physically navigate a Chromebook, to tap on icons, to enter typing, type in answers to problems, to switch between apps, and yet they're required to jump between multiple programs, apps, Met, Google Meet chats, negotiate the microphone, all of these things, often with minimal to no support or assistance. It doesn't work for students who have language processing delays, for example, or require additional support time to transition from activity to activity or who require adaptive accommodations to learn. And as a result, none of the students whose IEPs call for those particular accommodations are being met. It's not possible to count 15 minutes of instructional time over Google Chat as something that really helps meet the needs in the IEP. So who does it fall on? The parents. We ourselves have erected a tent. We've hired an educational consultant to try to help, but that's only a couple of hours a week and we're doing this outdoors. This is something the district can do. In 2000, I'm sorry, in 1918, when the flu pandemic hit, hundreds of districts had outdoor all-day classrooms with paraprofessional support and teachers and students did not get sick. We need to be innovative. There's lots of, thank you. There's lots of space available at the district schools themselves. The CLCs have indoor and outdoor space. Tents could be put up. We could tap into the resources of volunteers, community agencies, other alliances with other community providers, both public and private, in order to staff this. We wouldn't require anyone who is not comfortable with in-person education, either receiving or giving it to do it. We accept that reality, but we believe that the district should look at innovative solutions. We invite you to come out, look at our tent, look at our learning pod, implement a model like that for students who don't have the luxury that we do of being able to do that in our backyard, for students who are being tutored by basically their fourth grade brother or sister in their second grade learning curriculum. It's dire and it's important. And if it doesn't happen, the district is going to spend years untangling the legal and educational deficits that come from not providing the federally mandated IEP education. Please let us work together to find solutions to get these students in-person education and assistance now.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas and Ms. Christensen. Appreciate you joining us tonight, sharing your concerns. Next up, Kevin Burkholder. Hi, Mr. Burkholder.
Hi.
Thank you for joining us tonight and your time will begin when you're ready as well.
Well, good evening. Appreciate the time to speak to all of you this evening. My wife Julie and I have lived in Akron for 20 years. I have been in full-time ministry in Akron for those 20 years and we have three kids in Akron Public Schools. I am the son of two public school educators and so I'm well aware. I'm also a leader in the community, being in ministry, and want to encourage you to continue to serve those that have elected you. And I'm with you as leaders. I know it's a very difficult season. I too would like to urge you tonight to consider a return to in-person learning for special needs students. Our experience as a family with special needs in Akron Public Schools has been absolutely fantastic. The staff, the administrators, the aides, all the ground-level workers have been wonderful with every interaction that we have ever had. And we know that there are a lot of people who love the children in our community. But I want to speak to you tonight about the most vulnerable students in our community in urging you to consider a return to in-person learning for them. This past Friday, I put out a Facebook post just to, made it public and to my friends. And I know that that post ended up reaching hundreds of people by the time that it was shared. I had a lot of interactions through comments online, through messages that were sent to me directly, through people that I spoke to. Over the weekend, it is evident to me that this is a community-wide issue. A few of the things I'll summarize, similar to what was shared by Max. I just want to share a couple of categories of responses. One of those is the overwhelming situation with the technology. Students are not adapting well to it and at times can even lead to violent reactions from some students who just can't sit there and engage in the technology. If you've ever been to a special needs classroom, you'll know they're set up in ways that help the students know what to expect. And inconsistent schedules can be very, very difficult for the students to adapt to in online learning. Short attention spans, as was mentioned, many rely on one-to-one aides and families. Multiple families that spoke with me are paying for some of this out of their pocket. And of course, some of this can lead to behavioral issues in the, in the home and in the family as well. So please, would you consider the innovation, the quality staff that you have? We have no doubt they're capable of pulling off a return to in-person learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burkholder. Appreciate you joining us as well. Next up is Ms. Tamey McCloskey. Ms. McCloskey, welcome. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
Your time begins whenever you're ready.
Well, I mean, everybody pretty much has touched base a little bit on all the things I think that we all want to say. I spent the whole weekend taking notes, saying things I wanted to say, and then this morning happened with school. So I think my best, my best way to explain it as a mom is my experience with my daughter. She has Down syndrome. She has severe ADHD. She has, you know, speech issues and, you know, many other disabilities. So each time that we try to get on the computer like today, you know, she can pay attention for a few minutes and then she's up and off into the other room and I'm chasing her, trying to coax her back to the computer. And there were times that I couldn't get her back to the computer because there's, everything is off. She sees a TV. She wants to watch TV because she's at home. And then I get her back for a few minutes. I can get her to focus. And then she's, you know, she just, she just can't sit in front of a computer and learn. I mean, it was chasing, it was melt, she finally just had a meltdown and she was just done. She did not get anything out of what she was supposed to be learning because she can't sit there and just look at faces. She wants to say hi to everybody, you know, and it's just not her. It's not a realistic way for her to learn. And so I feel like, you know, she's not getting an education right now whatsoever. And I, you know, and I, I'm here to find out what my options are or when we can find out if I can help find a solution as a parent, you know, with any type of committee or something like that. But it's a very serious thing that we have, I believe, to take care of right away. And I know other things have opened up in the public schools, that kids are now allowed to be around each other. You know, sports and, you know, and that's fine, but now I feel like that has been, we're not a priority. The kids with special needs are not a priority. And, you know, they need to be a priority. You know, these kids, the longer this goes on, the farther they're going to be delayed. Now, my daughter was doing so well before the COVID, you know, and that is out of everybody's control. And then it was summer break, so here we are. And, you know, I feel like we're going to have to start all over again where she was because she was doing so well and she's just going to get, you know, pushed to the wayside. Like, it's not important that she's not getting an education because there's too many other things more important. And I think these kids are, they're important. They need to be a priority. I'm left, I usually talk a lot. I was trying not to talk too much.
One, one minute left. Thank you.
Okay. And I didn't know, I know you can't answer, but I didn't know if there was anything that the board has already thought about or if there's anything that's been in place. Is this, is this always starting from like step one right now? Like this is all new territory that no one has, you know, with the board, no one has sat down and talked about it or thought of options for these kids. So if this is step one, then I think that, you know, the sooner everybody can move forward and find some type of solution. The school buildings are empty. There's nobody in the school buildings. Even if we could find a way to social distance them in the buildings or, you know, like I said, there's options and I'm sure together, hopefully, everybody can find an option so that our kids can continue to thrive.
Thank you so much, Ms. McCloskey.
Thank you so much for letting me speak.
You're welcome. We're glad to have you. And we have Ms. Christina Fox. Ms. Fox, welcome. Thank you for joining us. Your time begins whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Bravo. And thank you, school board administrators that are on this call. I am very glad to have this opportunity to speak to you, to speak to you from my heart. My husband and I are proud parents of a special needs high schooler. We've been in the APS system from day one. We understood and we supported the school shutdown. We fully realized why it was important and we were appreciative that we were able to keep staff and students as safe as possible. So earlier this summer, when we heard about the hybrid plan that Akron was considering, returning students back to school, we were particularly grateful and relieved because it included special needs kids perhaps coming back to school five days a week. And I'm not going to call it my age or anything, but I've been doing this for a little while with our daughter. And there are certain things that we have learned help her be able to have a meaningful day, be able to relieve stress in the house because as, as another parent, I mean, Mr. Burkholder may have said it, this presents unique stress to special needs kids. They have this, sometimes a complete inability to process and understand what is going on. The school day provides a consistency of schedule. We have excellent teachers who are, the paraprofessionals that we have had over the years have been out of this world. We don't have access to that. No matter what I do, I'm still, I'm still mom. So I'm still the mom that makes you, makes you brush your teeth. And now all of a sudden I want you to participate in OT. Mom, my degree wasn't in that. I, I'm doing my best, but I do not, I cannot offer her the visual cues, the speech cues, the physical cues to get my daughter to respond at the paraprofessionals, at the therapist that she has, that they have developed with her. So she's missing out on therapy. We're trying. But we are, she's falling so far behind in where she was when we left school in March. The ability to contextualize. She loves hearing her teacher get on that screen every morning and say, hi Katie. Say hi to her specifically. My daughter's face lights up, but very quickly she realizes this is not my normal school. My, my friends are not here. I cannot relate to this. I'm not going to. When they hold up the thing and they're trying to do the lessons by holding the paper in front of the screen, she can't process that. So all of these are things that are, that are really, our kids are regressing and we don't have any options. When you are a special needs parent, you are, you are an island unto yourself. You really are. And people don't realize it until you're on this side of it. You have fewer chances for those children to socialize, fewer opportunities for them to get any other. There's, there can be, there's sometimes there's no extracurricular, so there's nothing else we can do. So school is such an important part of their life. It's an important part of their day. So it brings stress to them. It brings stress to their family. And I really implore the school board to consider allowing our kids to come back to school. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Fox. And again, thank all of you for, for being here for your kids, for coming out and letting us know what your concerns are and for sharing with us. We appreciate it. And as Dr. Hall said, we're all better for it. So we appreciate you hearing from, hearing from you. And again, while we will not be engaging with you at this meeting, we will follow up with you individually if needed. And I did write down a few questions, I think, you posed, so we'll get back to you with some answers on that. But again, thank you for joining us this evening. We appreciate it. All right, at this time, we are going to move on to the next item on our agenda under Communications, item 3.1. There is a resolution in front of the board this evening to consider supporting the Akron Zoo levy. And so at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Piakos. Good evening, Doug. Welcome. Thank you for joining us. It's good to see you.
Same here. My pleasure. And thank you for giving me the time tonight. With your permission, I'm going to click Present Now just so that I can share a PowerPoint with you.
That's it.
Entire screen. So please let me know if you can see my screen at this point.
We can see that if you.
Okay.
There you go.
So first of all, let me start out with a question that has come up very recently as to why we're on the ballot now, this year in the middle of a pandemic. Just to address that directly, the zoo's existing levy is a seven-year levy. Every seven years, we have to be back on the ballot and it's an all or nothing vote. So the last time this was on the ballot was in 2013, seven years ago. So the next time for us to be on the ballot, to have this levy considered, would be November of this year. And that legislation was approved by Summit County Council in December of 2019, long before we knew there would be a pandemic. So I just wanted to address that upfront because there have been some questions about why now. The reason now is important is because it happens to fall at the end of the seven-year cycle. So with that being said, I'm going to run us through this PowerPoint. And first of all, our mission is to connect your life to wildlife while inspiring lifelong learning and conservation action. We refer to that as our mission triangle. Those are the three things that everything that the Akron Zoo does has to touch on or we simply don't do it. If we can't connect your life, we can't inspire lifelong learning and we can't create conservation action, then we would look for another means to accomplish something. We do know that the zoo enhances our community, enhances our educational landscape and enhances the conservation landscape, both where we live here today and in connecting residents of Summit County and this region to serious conservation success stories around the world. In fact, that's one of the things that makes science and STEM learning with the Akron Zoo so unique and inspirational because the students have the ability to get real-time information from conservation success stories such as Pride of Africa, the new habitat that opened last year, and rebuilding the pride in the South Rift Valley of Kenya, the most successful African lion conservation program across continental Africa. These types of connections go to the authenticity of our programs. So the, whoa, sorry. The next slide talks a little bit about where we've been. Since 2011, the zoo's overall engagement onsite has grown from a little over 320,000 people to now pretty regularly over 400,000 people with a peak of 417,000 folks onsite in 2017. And last year, 402,000 joined us along with the opening of Pride of Africa. Since the time that the Akron Zoo was first publicly supported in 2001, our attendance has grown from just over 100,000 people visiting this informal science learning center to now over 400,000. So it's almost quadrupled. During that period of time, we've also seen the percentage of use in the park being about 40% from within Summit County, 60% from surrounding counties and states. And this actually underlines some of the economic impact that the zoo also provides on top of the impact of the educational landscape. That economic impact for the Akron Zoo located here in the heart of Summit County is that for every dollar of public investment the zoo has received since 2011, the Akron Zoo has yielded nearly $8 in economic activity back out to Summit County to support other jobs and to support other economic development. So that's a total of $66 million invested over that time and over half a billion dollars returned. In fact, the state of the zoo, which I recently gave, pushes that number to almost $600 million. Now, we are where kids and adults, I might add, love to learn because as I said before, the zoo was actually built as an informal science learning center that last year alone actually served over 91,000 individuals with our professional education programming through our education department here onsite and where they traveled out to schools and civic groups. For Akron Public Schools, that specifically translated into these few examples that I'm giving you here on the slide. Last year alone, we reached with science and STEM programs, every kindergartner in Akron Public Schools, every first grader, every second grader and every fifth grader. We reached over 3,500 students with multiple touchpoints through the year. And out of that 3,500 students, our development office and our education office worked with Akron Public School personnel and reached out to local community partners so that we could deliver 3,342 students free STEM and science education programming in 2019 alone. That partnership as it is, is an incredible one that we expect to see grow with time, but again, can only happen by a meeting of the minds as a whole. This year and last year Backpack Adventure, we actually reached nearly 7,000 backpacks moving out to students that were identified by Akron Public Schools and 14,000 free tickets that were given to those students and their caregiver to be able to come back. And each of the images that you see here on the left of this slide are of this year's Backpack Adventure, which was quite a bit different because due to COVID, we actually had it be a drive-through backpack and we shifted the materials to be pandemic-related so that the students would actually have everything they need to one day be able to return to school or to learn from home and to fight the pandemic. Because many other organizations also came around to help support the students. So we looked at where we could add value in the best possible way and that was the end result. And this year's tickets that were given out actually date into 2021 with the hopes that students and families will feel better about coming back at some point later than they might necessarily right now. Now, we're also all about saving species. At this point in time, 46 species survival plans call Akron Zoo Home and 21 conservation projects, both local and global, are participated in by the zoo that helps us make all of our science and STEM-based learning authentic. And we're one of only 237 AZA-accredited zoos worldwide. That's an important number because in the United States, there are almost 4,000 licensed animal exhibitors by the USDA, but only about 200 of those, Akron Zoo included, meet the requirements to be AZA-accredited, which is similar to a hospital actually being declared a cancer center or a heart center. It's data-driven evaluation. Whoop, I keep rolling past that. So being a responsible steward has had the levy funded invested to create new habitats here on ground, to support our programs, to keep our prices low and to give a home to over 250 species and more than 1,000 animals who do reside here at the Akron Zoo right now. The Akron Zoo will be on the ballot on November 3rd requesting an eight-tenths of a mil renewal levy, which is exactly the same as it has been since 2000. and a four-tenths-of-a-mil increase. This request would cost the owner of a $100,000 home $2.92 per month. And it is the first time in 20 years that we've asked to partner with Summit County voters in a new way. Now, supporting the levy is an investment in the Summit County economy, in our educational landscape, in the preservation of wildlife and conservation action as a whole. It increases science and STEM-based education and outreach programs throughout the region, increases involvement in species survival plans and conservation programs, which add to the authenticity of the real-life science and STEM-based education we can provide. And it allows your Akron Zoo to provide more education animals and exciting habitats, such as a potential project featuring giraffes. And that's all as an end result of real-time surveys with the people of Summit County, asking them just like we did back in 2000, what do you want to see from your Akron Zoo? Because we are here to support you. Now, I know I have limited time, so I will finish on this slide here, asking everyone to please consider humbly an endorsement for this levy due to our long-term partnership and the overall benefit to the education landscape, both inside the city of Akron and across Summit County, as well as the economic investment where we're able to return $8 to Summit County's economy for every $1 of public investment. VoteAkronZoo.org is the support website for this levy campaign. And there are also mail-in opportunities for individual endorsements or a means to actually provide an individual endorsement directly at VoteAkronZoo.org. And with that, I stopped sharing my screen and happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Doug. We appreciate the presentations. Any comments, questions from the board?
Patrick, I'll go ahead and weigh in just real quick. Sorry, I couldn't chat or unmute. I could either chat or unmute. I couldn't do both here for a second. Just, first of all, thanks Doug for your time and for coming. And we appreciate the partnership that you have with Akron Public Schools. And there's a reason that you're part of our essential experiences for Akron students because we believe strongly in this district that it shouldn't matter what zip codes you're from, what school you go to. It should be, it's essential. And we believe the zoo is essential to Akron Public School students. So I just wanted to point that out, that you are, you know, Backpack Adventures is one of my favorite things I've volunteered for. It's, I missed senior, it was, it was senior month this month and I missed that day. That's one of my, that's about my second favorite. So I just wanted to point out what a treasure that I think you are in the community. So thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Anyone else? We're hearing none. Doug, again, thank you for your time. We appreciate you coming out. And of course, we appreciate your partnership. I think Lisa said it best. We think the work that you do is essential and your partnership with Akron Public Schools is top-notch. So we appreciate everything you do. At this time, there is a resolution in front of the board. I'd like to entertain any motion.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. McKittrick, a second by Ms. Mansfield. Any final comments, questions, or discussion on this resolution in support of the Akron Zoo levy? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The resolution passes. Next up, we will have a presentation on the State Report Card. So at this time, I would like to pass it along to Dr. Ellen McWilliams Woods.
Hello, everyone. It's great to be here tonight to summarize what will be an interesting accountability report tonight. Just because, as you know, last spring, we had a lot of disruption with COVID-19 and we were unable to do a lot of our spring testing. So normally this time of year, I come to you and I give you a preview before our report card gets released. But tonight is gonna be a little bit different because only a few indicators are actually gonna be reported tonight. So it's gonna be a shorter presentation with just a few data points. And then I'll explain kind of the timeline of how the reports will come out. I am trying to cast, but right now Ryan may need to give me capability to be able to share my screen. I will also send this to Mr. Bravo in case, because for some reason I don't have the option to share. I've never experienced that before, so I will send it to you, Mr. Bravo, in case I am unable to.
I got it and I'm pulling it up now.
Right. Thank you. So, so there are, obviously, the State Report Card is one component to a lot of what we do in our accountability structure in the Akron Public Schools. Typically, the report card captures the vast majority, captures state testing with a few other indicators. And we have really designed our district and you all saw some of that data at the retreat that Mrs. Tepka shared, a lot of the other important college and career academy indicators that we've set specific goals and we're measuring and we report out to the community. So I always wanna make sure that, I start this presentation every year by saying that this is one sliver of our progress. We're really more focused on, are we preparing students for the college and careers? Do they have a plan when they graduate? Are they being successful when they move on to college or move on to the career? But, but part of the accountability system is this report card data. We do report it out. We find that it's important, but again, it's one part of the larger maze. So in our district focus, all of the strategies that we've put in place over the last five years to get to key results, you'll see some of these key results in our blue area reflected today in this presentation. So I'm gonna touch on three things. I'll share, these are preliminary report card results. The report cards will go public tomorrow from the state. So until those officially hit, this is preliminary data. I'll review highlights and sort of the next steps that we see just in terms of how we'll dive deeper into the data once it's released. The data isn't disaggregated right now. When we get to see the preliminary review of the data, we just get to see the bigger chunks of the data. Once it gets loaded into the report card, then we'll be able to disaggregate it. There'll be spreadsheets that have it broken down by all of the subgroups, by gender, by all of the different grade levels. So we'll be able to dive more deeply into the data once all of the spreadsheets are loaded on the state website. Okay. So, so every year for the past, I think it's been the past 13 years, we, we always have a slide that talks about the changes from one report card to the next. I grabbed a snapshot from last year's presentation. Most difficult things with the report card is the changes that keep happening in the way the tests are delivered, which vendors we're using, which standards are aligned, and how the report card is calculated. So I used to use apples and oranges and bananas to kind of show how year-to-year it's very difficult to compare because there were so many changes year-to-year. Stabilized a bit, except some of the targets were being raised the last few years. But we were actually in a place, because of so much pressure with our state legislators, to kind of leave the report cards and the testing more stable, except COVID happened. So the big changes, you can show the next slide, Mr. Bravo. The big changes this year is that due to COVID, all of the state testing last spring, which is the heavy season for all the state testing, those were canceled. After that, House Bill 197 was passed that, that looked at the impact of those state tests on the report card. And so what, what is in that bill is that there will be no, on this report card, there's no achievement measure, no gap closure measure, no progress measure, which is value-added. There's no teacher evaluation data and gifted data that will be displayed on the report card. What will be displayed measures, one that is not a typical standard measure, it's just displayed on our district detail page, which is the chronic absenteeism. In past years, we didn't get graded on that. It was just displayed. And then the three indicators that are typical in the report card, we have partial data for K3 literacy, we have graduation data and prepared-for-success, which is the high school transition prepared college and career data. Really, those two, the graduation and prepared-for-success are the only data points that we have complete data on tonight to show you. So therefore, House Bill 197 said there will be no report card grades. Each of these components, we usually got separate grades and then one total grade. No report card grades. There aren't gonna be any ratings based on the grades and based on the report card. So the data is only informational. The other major thing in House Bill 197 was there also therefore wouldn't be consequences applied to grades. So no school or district can go further into school improvement levels on this data. So it's kind of a whole harmless year. I do wanna let you know that based on that, House Bill 197, there's also a current bill that I'll talk about at the end, that they're looking at doing something similar for this year as well for next year's report card and for state testing this year because of the similar circumstances of how districts will be able to fully test and administer kind of equitably across the state. So here's the six typical components that would normally be reflected in our report card. Only three are going to be present this year, as I said. So no achievement, no progress, no gap closing, and then just partial for K3 and graduation and prepared-for-success. So underneath those six indicators are detailed measures. So down on the left-hand side of this chart, you can see the achievement component and progress and gap closing. In the middle, it's kind of the more detailed data points that come out of that. And you can see the red reflects that that data just didn't exist in the state. And then the orange is where it's partial and the green is where it's present. In the, on the state website, what they've decided is that some of the data will be available in a download-type format. It may not show up on the report card, but there will be downloadable data. And this whole chart is on the ODE website as well. If you go to the next screen, it continues to show the additional kind of district detail information about our teachers and evaluation data and what will be available on the website and what's available as they download in a spreadsheet that the district is, or the state is gonna post. And then the next slide shows the career technical planning districts. Our career tech data is also reflected on a separate report card. That is also to be released tomorrow, but we don't have the preliminary data that wasn't released to us separately. So when we see the data tomorrow, we'll be able to analyze that better. Also be able to see what everybody else's results look like across the state. So, so four data points we're gonna talk about. So the chronic absenteeism, which is the percentage of students who are absent more than 10%. The state target is 13.6%. We saw significant improvement from really the 2018, 19. The baseline year was 2017, 18. So we did see significant improvement in that measure. And as you know, we have major strategies with the grounds foundation and the Get to School campaign. Because 18.8, we've gotta get down to that, at least the state target and below, to focus all of our energies on students being engaged and present in their learning. Next slide. Our graduation rate, there are two rates that we get on the report card. There's a four-year graduation rate and then a five-year graduation rate. So if a student doesn't graduate in their, in four years, they still look at whether we continue to work with them to graduate within that next year. And we really pride ourselves on how, we don't even stop after that next year. I mean, we continue in our Akron Alternative Academy to continue to work with students all the way up through their 22 years of old, years of age, to continue to work with students to graduate. So we saw an increase again this year in our graduation rate for a four-year. It's important to note that this, the graduation rate is always a year behind. So this data is for 80.2% of our students graduated. That's for the class of 2019. So that's a year behind. It's reported now. The reason why it's a year behind is that we get to count our summer graduates in that graduation rate. So it's always delayed. There's not enough time to finish out that summer graduation before the report cards come out. And then the five-year rate is the class of 2018, because it took two, you know, an additional year to graduate and it's a year behind. And that bumped up to 83.8%. On the next slide, you'll see sort of our history of our graduation rates. And you can see back in 2015 is when we had, we were at 83.8, which is actually where we have returned this year. We were at, for our five-year rate, we were at 83.8. And then you see this big drop the next year. Same thing with our four-year rate in 2014, this big drop. That's what was happening during that time was the new Common Core standards were, that came in and all of the new state testing. Everyone in the state took about a 20-point drop in student achievement and graduation rates took a hint because the new state test and the new Common Core standards back then, we've now shifted away from Common Core standards. But back then, they were much more rigorous and it caused a drop in the graduation rate. But you can see through the blue line is the four-year rate that we have steadily recovered since then is the five-year rate. Then we've actually now returned back to that kind of three new state testing and new standards. I did show you, just because this is a year behind, we were able to, I was able to show you the high school by high school graduation rate. If it's coded green, that means it increased. This is sorted by five-year rate because we value the four-year rate. But we also are very proud of the five-year rate because it shows the tenacity of our students and our staff to continue to work with students, even if they don't make it in that four years. A lot of that is added, some summer intensive and then kind of individualizing support students for next year. Everybody kind of took that nice steady increase except for North and Firestone with their five-year rate. five-year rate, which was a small drop for both North and Firestone. But otherwise, we've had a nice steady increase in our graduation rate across all of our high schools. The next measure, this is the third measure, is our K3 literacy. And this is a partial measure. Normally, what this measure looks at is from fall to fall, so kindergarten in September to October in September, November in September. We follow the same students year to year and we measure their reading in fall to fall to see if they move on track in their reading, or did they remain off track in reading? So we're looking at since fall to fall to fall. The normal measure also adds in the third grade OST, which is the third grade state test. Because that was canceled, that altered the way the state could report this measure. So all they're going to report tomorrow on the report cards, these are all web-based report cards, is how many students were on track in the fall 2018 and how many students were on track in 2019 and how many students moved. The measure looks at moving people from, students from off-track to on-track in their reading. This visual, the color coding is just to show the different years, I shouldn't have used green and red when I look at it right now, but the color coding is just to show the different years. It pretty much is consistent from last year to this year, on what's recorded for how many students were on track and off track. If we take a look at the next visual, it shows, I had this from last year, and this is a year ago data, because I can't see everybody else's data yet until the report cards get released tomorrow. But I wanted to just show you what it looks like in percentages. This is the percentage of off-track students in reading across the Ohio eight. We assess students in the fall, there's a cut score for us to say is the student on track in reading or off-track. Obviously, our goal is to move as many of the off-track students over to the on-track. And you can see where we are, percentage of off-track students is on the far left side in the green. Cincinnati is the only district that beats us in third grade with the lowest percentage for off-track. And I thought it might be helpful just for you to see when it's percentages. Again, we'll be able to look at this tomorrow, we'll be able to have the data from all the other districts across the state, even though it's, we should be able to see this data from last year. The last measure is what's called prepared for success. And these are measures that look at college readiness and some career readiness measures. And typically on the report card, they take certain measures that are listed in this list and they turn it into a grade based on individual points that students earn on these measures. Because there's not going to be a grade, we'll basically be just looking at all of the measures to see if we made increases in those year to year. So the green highlight here shows where we increased from 2019 to 2020. And then I also put the state average from a year ago. I don't know the state average yet until the report card gets released tomorrow. We'll be able to see where we are against the state average, but I thought that would be helpful for you to see. Obviously, we're, you know, where we have put our energies because of College and Career Academy is continuing to move that industry-recognized credential. And these are percentages of our students who are earning the three-point industry-recognized credential and the percentage of students who are earning dual enrollment credit. So for example, dual enrollment credit this year, we had 21% of our students earning dual enrollment credit. The state average is 22.3, that was what it was a year ago. That's how you read this chart. The important thing is that we keep moving and keep making progress. These are areas, though, that we are continuing to dig even more deeply in for our College and Career Academy strategies, particularly in the area of the higher-level courses, like the AP and the dual enrollment, as I shared with you at our retreat, and I think in a previous presentation, that's an area that we continue to want to improve on, which is why we're bringing in programs like AVID, which supports underrepresented students to move and to continue to take those higher-level courses. And for us as a district to make sure that we're offering more higher-level courses. Difference between ACT and SAT, most districts just decide which one they're going to go with. We don't offer in our district the SAT as a district-wide, but we do offer the ACT for all of our students to take. And we offer it to all of the students twice that we pay for. So just kind of the high-level talking point is that we've got that continued substantial improvement in our four-year and five-year graduation rates, the steady improvement in the prepared for success measures. We did reduce the chronic absenteeism and our K3 literacy is on-track rates. We do outpace other districts, but it has been consistent. So we always like to see that improvement and progress and continued improvement. So we'll be definitely looking at where we need to keep tweaking so that we can continue to outpace other districts and especially the urban districts. There also is, on the ODE website, if you just do a search on, when you get to the ODE website on local report cards, it's very easy, very seamless to go and just look up the Akron Public Schools. Right on the main page of the Akron Public Schools, there's a district detail menu item. And if you click on that, there is a place now for districts to put a district profile. I've shared that with you and I've gone through that with you. We actually looked at it at the retreat that we just had. We always say it's to tell the rest of the story. Our district profile will be updated and tomorrow, when the, when the report card gets posted live by ODE, our district profile link will be updated so that some of the new data that tells the rest of the story for the Akron Public Schools will be available for anyone who wants to see just beyond more of the state testing results. So the next steps, here's the sequence of what happens tomorrow. Early in the morning, the statewide spreadsheet are sent to all the superintendents. We get the superintendent and all of the senior staff will get an hour to look at that, to look at our data compared to all the other districts. He releases that spreadsheet, that kind of is a massive spreadsheet that should all report our data for every single district in the state. That gets released to the media and then an hour later, ODE puts the report cards live that are more of these digital report cards on their website. Look, most importantly for us is we like to look at all that statewide data, look at state averages, look at what the trends are, where did folks increase and decrease, especially during this kind of odd year that we had this past year with COVID. Able to then dig deeper into the disaggregated data. Obviously, we look at our own data all the time, but the report card pulls out only the students who were actually with us for the bulk of the year. So we'll be able to look at that and look at it by all of our typical subgroups. And then we'll be monitoring this new bill, Senate Bill 358, which is proposed right now, it's coming through the Senate Education Committee that looks at eliminating or reducing the state testing for this year and also looks at doing something very similar where there won't be report card grades next year in September for the 2021 school year as well. So we'll be monitoring that, that's expected to move through within the next few weeks, to be honest. Everybody knows what the status of the state testing is going to be. And that is, that is it. And any questions?
All right, we'll open it up for questions now, and Dr. Hall was in the queue, so Dr. Hall?
Yeah, actually, thanks, Mr. President, I appreciate it. Can you put the slides back up? Because my questions are actually germane to a couple of the slides. I think it's easier to answer the questions if I can reference a slide, if you all don't
And do you know which slide you wanted me to go to?
I do. Yeah, can you start with the absenteeism slide, please? I think there are three slides, absenteeism slide is the first one. Yeah, that one right there. So first off, thank you for the presentation, I appreciate, it was very informative, Dr. Woods. So the question I had on this slide was, just to clarify a question, so that was a percentage of students that missed 10 days or more in a year, is that right?
They are absent more than 10% of the school year.
10% of the school year, thank you.
And then, and then so- They want that number to go down, obviously.
Roger that, Roger that, yeah, thank you, I appreciate it. And then, so you mentioned the state target's 13.6%. I'm just curious, do you know, is that, where does that number come from? I mean, is that, is that, I mean, is that really a state average? Or, you know, or state target the right word? I mean, it's the state target, where are they getting that target number from? Is that like, what benchmark, I mean, where are they pulling that from?
Yeah, I will have to get that and send it to you to make sure, unless Dan Rambler or Carla can hop on, because they deal with the absenteeism more than I do. But typically, all of the targets are based on, nine times out of 10, they're based on state, they look at the trends across the state for all the districts, and they either pick an average, or they sometimes, depending on where they are in the progress, usually every couple of years, two to three years, they move the target to try to move everybody to start to decrease that number. So, but I can look that up and send that to you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And the reason why I asked that question is because, you know, is, because when you said that, I'm like, well, gosh, like, so they're not putting us in cohorts, you know, we're being compared to a rural district in Athens, we're being compared to a suburban district outside of Columbus, is that, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So that doesn't make any sense to me, it's just me editorializing. But, okay, and then my next question was, was, Mr. President, if you could go to the on/off-track slide? And I just, again, want to make sure I was reading that slide right. Yeah, I think that was the slide. So, okay, okay, so if I'm reading this right, then, so if I look at, sort of, let's go to the off-track side of it. So I'm saying, all right, so in 2018, I had 320 first graders that were off-track. Now, those first graders become second graders in fall of 2019, right? Am I reading that right?
Yes.
Okay. So, so when we go from 320 to 502 off-track, is, you know, can you, can you comment on sort of why, why, like, what's happening between first and second grade and between second and third grades, or why, why there's a consistent sort of increase in the number of off-track students?
Yeah, Mr. Bravo, if you actually go to the next slide, it's even more kind of visible here. When you look at our percentages of off-track, you can see that from kindergarten to first, from first to second, and from second to third, it actually increases-
Right.
-year to year, which, that, that is a concern for us. There are some factors as to why that is true. And the K3 literacy, each district gets to pick off of an approved list of, that's not the same test for everybody across the state. We use MAP. And this next year, we're actually switching to I-Ready, but we used, previously, we used MAP. And there's a different test between first grade and second grade, it's a different version. Younger test, you can read the test to students and it has kind of different administration. And then when you get to the older grades, it changes to a different version. That could be a factor in terms of how that test gets administered, but ultimately, you know, we would want, at a minimum, for that percentage to be stable, and of course, ultimately, we would want to see that decreasing year to year as we go through.
Yeah.
That's, that's the one factor that I think is important, how the versions change when you get to that second grade.
Roger that. And by the way, I mean, I didn't sort of notice that Akron is better than the other urban, it was on three out of four of these. So I mean, I think that's definitely, you know, worth, worth recognition. You know, when I look at like Dayton and Toledo that go and can't make the 75% and 44%, I mean, it, it just blows my mind. So I, so I do recognize and appreciate that Akron is outperforming the other urbans. But again, I was just curious, is there sort of what changes between second and third grade, whether, from, whether it's an issue of, you know, I think you touched on it, is there's a difference in how it's given? Are there, and I'm sure the answer is probably yes to this already, but, but can you speak to sort of, you know, what kind of countermeasures are in place or that we're going to put it, or that we're talking about putting in place to sort of help to, to your earlier point, sort of help to shrink that gap and it maybe starts to reduce it as we go from year to year?
Yeah, the major strategies that we've put in place and we continue to intensify are individualized plans with our, and the diagnostic skills of our teachers to really keep training them to really be reading diagnosticians, where they are knowing exactly what the deficits are in our students. Obviously, they come with varied reading skills, with some students with, you know, kind of zero background on reading and others who come from rich language development backgrounds. And so to be able to look and kind of carefully analyze and diagnose what each student's unique needs are and then figure out that reading plan, unique for each student. We also increase the number of minutes for our reading instruction for all of our primary students and intermediate students, but we primarily for our primary students, so that we can prioritize literacy and make sure that we're closing those gaps as early as possible, because we know it just compounds later on. And we are a district that never stops the support for literacy. We have instructional coaches in every single building that coaches, with sitting in the professional learning communities with our teachers, where we're sitting, looking at the reading results from students and what they're, they're reading, they're called oral reading records that, that students have, so that we can make sure we're challenging and keeping students' growth and development in their reading skills. So we have coaches that help support that.
Roger that. And then my last question was related to SB 358. So as I was, as I was seeking through the possibilities of eliminating state testing, I'm sorry, and/or reducing state testing, and then also going away from report cards for this academic year as well, it, it, it makes me think that perhaps the state is thinking that, that because of districts being online exclusively, that that's going to cause a drop in these numbers and so therefore they don't want to sort of hold us, you know, accountable for extreme and unusual circumstances that are outside of our control. Is that, am I, am I reading that right?
Right, it's really two things. It's, it's that, you know, every district has a different educational environment happening right now, they had that last spring and they have that right now with some districts. And we often don't remember and realize that there are a number of southern rural districts who don't even have access to the internet, period. You know, they can't even get lines into the homes and into some of their schools to be able to even provide remote learning- You know, they can't even get lines into the homes and into some of their schools to be able to even provide remote learning in that kind of situation. So because of that huge diversity, it's very difficult to come up with standard testing procedures and protocols that would kind of equalize that playing field across the entire district. Reason, and then the other reason, besides the testing environment, we also are having such a diverse educational opportunities for students, that to be able to really use the time, even for the districts who are doing blended, to use a lot of time in the face-to-face situation for state tests. By the time you would get it done in two days, when kids are only face-to-face for two days, that could take like almost all of the instruction, instructional days to administer the number of state tests that we have and the frequency. So it gets complicated when the state's trying to map out what to do. One complicating factor, though, is that the state does not control all of the tests that we administer. Most of them are mandated by the U.S. Department of Education. So the Senate bill actually has language that says Ohio will request a waiver from the U.S. Department of Ed on the federally required test. Our Secretary of Education in Washington has said publicly that she is not inclined to cancel any state testing or the state testing requirements, and may not grant any of the waivers. So it may turn out that Ohio passes the Senate bill to be able to relax the testing, but they request a waiver from the U.S. Department of Ed, and it's denied, and we may end up having to give some of the tests. That's why we'll have to watch, sort of, phase one will happen first, where our own state legislators will pass the legislation, and then we'll have to wait to see what the U.S. Department of Education does.
Roger that. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Ellen McWilliams Woods, for the presentation. We appreciate it. All right. At this time, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the previous many meeting minutes. These are under section four of your agenda, four point one and four point two. Regular meeting minutes for August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty. Special meeting minutes for August thirty-first, two thousand twenty. We'll entertain a motion. Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Dr. Akbar. Any comments or questions or discussion on the meeting minutes? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall? I see video there, but no comment. There we go.
I think you're saying I.
Thank you.
I was trying to say I. Is it like I, is it the silent language for I? My, I'm sorry, my mute button was stuck on it, and it wasn't even appearing for me to turn it off, so.
We got you.
But yeah, I was trying to sign it, too. I got to get my slide language is a little rusty, so.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
I.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Superintendent's recommendations?
Yes, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the personnel recommendations presented in category five, room sixteen. And again, thank you, Mrs. McKittrick, for outlining the death of Gloria Glenda Roden, child nutrition employee who passed away on September eight.
Thank you. We'll take a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. A motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Ms. Autry. Any comments, questions, or discussion on the personnel agenda items? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
I.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes, I'm staying from six point one.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Next, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. A motion by Ms. McKittrick, a second by Mr. Alexander. Any comments, questions, or discussion on the consent agenda items? Just want to say thank you to the Orr Family Foundation for their thirty thousand dollar distance learning program grant to us, and, and also, as always, to the state for the fresh fruits and vegetables program. It's a fantastic program, and I'm glad to know, I asked the superintendent earlier if that would still continue as we hand out lunches. So, and it will, and so we just want to say thank you for those two grants. We'll take, roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
I.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the business affairs recommendations presented in category twenty-three.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. McKittrick, a second by Mr. Alexander. Any comments, questions, or discussion on the business affair?
Of course.
Mr. Alexander, and then Ms. Autry?
Yes, on item twenty-three point two one and twenty-three point two two, can we explain the program and how the staff are selected for these two programs?
Oh, the master's cohort, there are, for that one, and also for our Inspired Leaders Program, we look at many of our teachers or even administrators who want to further their career across the district. Look at those folks and do an evaluation through our CNI division. And I'm sure Dr. McWilliams Woods can add some to that.
We, we do an open application process for faculty. There's three programs that want to either get their master's degree in administration, if they already have a master's degree, but they want to get their principal license, their administrative license. And then the third program is our Aspiring Principals Academy, where you already have an administrative license, and now you just want to go through our whole orientation and training process. So there's an open application process, and folks apply, and then we take a look at it. They have to submit references, and we go out and talk to folks and see kind of the body of work they've done. And then a decision is made of who should go into the various programs.
And in those programs, the far as, and I know Dr. Akbar is probably gearing up for this question, but as far as equitable, the equity of those, those individuals coming in, and the backgrounds, and the, as far as, you know, people of color as well coming into those, how is that broken down? And how does that look for some of those individuals? Because we talk about looking at diversity with our staff, and I was wondering how, how many of those, and what the numbers are for that.
Yeah, we can, right now, we're recruiting and enrolling the students all right now, so we can give you the summary of those programs for this year. We, I will tell you that the number of applicants from our different diverse groups within the district for, based on race, based on lesbian, gay, bisexual, based on gender, like, all of that broken down, especially gender by grade level, is not, the applicants that we get in are not where we'd like them to be, which is why we have put more emphasis on kind of that mentoring and going out and tapping people to say, maybe you've never thought about administration, but we see that in you. And we really try to encourage and kind of walk people through that application process. So that's where the work is, is on having people apply and putting their name in for the programs, which has to be more of that one-to-one kind of outreach. Even that would be wonderful for the employee resource groups to take that on, to also help kind of groom that future leaders in the district, because the whole purpose is to try to grow our own leaders, because we find great success with that over the years. But we can show you the data for this year.
Okay, thank you.
We should be able to wrap it up within the next few weeks.
Thank you, Ms. Autry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. My question was about items twenty-three teen and twenty-three eleven. The memorandum of understanding for students in our attendance area. I guess we pay for the Title I services for them to go somewhere else. My question is just one out of curiosity. Do we know approximately how many students that that covers?
Yeah, Mrs. Autry, so far, it's approximately sixteen students who are attending the parochial schools in those districts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Any other questions on business affairs items? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
As I'm taking roll, I see that Mr. Alexander dropped off. We'll pause on this, but, Dr. Hall?
I.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Yes, a couple of things. Last week, we recognized two of our APS students for their accomplishments in attendance as part of our Stay in the Game initiative. I, along with Josh Allen and Gilby, stopped by the home of Janiah Myers, who's a tenth grader at Kimmore Garfield, to present her with a backpack full of some prizes and incentives and tickets, actually, to go to the Akron Zoo. And then we stopped over at Reimer, and Evan Hetrick, who's a third grader, he got an award, and he actually will get to give the tortoises at the Akron Zoo a shower behind the scenes inside of their enclosure. Both students really should be commended, you know, for their work on helping us lower our chronic attendance rate by making sure that they're getting to school. The other thing is, as of today, of course, all of our grades are present and reporting for classes. We will give a full report on various data points on a weekly basis, so we'll do that. Next Monday, I'll send out a report on how we're doing. We also have worked around distributing Chromebooks to kindergarten students, also having a hearing test, a vision exam, and an entering assessment that they were doing all last week. Some of the issues around that are, of course, they're kindergarten students, so yes, there are some issues about getting them to learn how to log on to the Chromebooks along with their parents. I know Mrs. Mansfield posed that question, I believe that she got from some parents regarding, you know, whether we can post videos on how to do that, you know, we talked about that this morning as senior staff, and are actually looking at some training sessions, additional training sessions that we can provide for our parents to make sure that they're accessing the Chromebooks. There was another issue that came up. A person had talked about, you know, one of our, according, accordingly, one of our teachers talked about the uniform, you know, back in, that was in July, or May, actually, of this year, you know, the board allowed us to forego the uniform issue for this year. So I'll be sending out some correspondence and posting it to our website, just to make sure that all of our staff and parents know that for grades K through eight, we're not enforcing the uniform policy this year, but we are just saying kids should be dressed appropriately when they're online for courses. We will also, next week, will issue meal numbers as part of our weekly data points or dashboard for issues in the district. Right now, since we started on September ninth, we served about thirty-eight thousand four hundred meals. I saw that in action at Reimer last week when I arrived there. People were pulling up and getting their meals. In addition, the majority of the teachers from Reimer were actually in their classrooms, either preparing for the next group of kids who were going to start and dealing with the kids who had already started. The last thing I want to mention is regarding COVID nineteen in Summit County, you know, we did go to red. Part of that was because of increased infections, and one of those was related to, you know, an event where people gathered. I think it was a social club, and that helped drive up the numbers, which is why we're back in red. We're also required to post our COVID dashboard, which we've done. It's on our website right now. So when you go to our head website, it's District, it's right there on the bottom corner, COVID, our COVID dashboard. So we have to report the number of infections that we have in the school district. And so we're, we're doing that. We have one student that we know had a COVID infection, has not been in a building in about three or four, three weeks or so. And then I believe another staff member today at a different building, we got notification about that. But again, that was another person who has not been present in the building for quite some time. We then follow up with Summit County Public Health, because they'll do contact tracing, and they really do work well with Deborah Folken, meeting all those requirements. In addition, I believe we have some soccer games this evening, so we have our staff who will be on over at Pellet, looking at where we mark green tape in the bleachers, because we're limited to a certain number of spectators in the, in the stands, and, you know, have, making sure that all of those procedures are being followed. I believe Summit County Public Health will have someone there as well, along with the Ohio High School Athletic Association will be sending people out, so we'll be monitoring all of the athletic events as well.
Yes, I think you were, I think, I thought you were about to go there for one of my questions that hit off your head. And maybe you did, and I, and I missed it, but I was going to ask about an update on how the athletics were going. And I know you said there's a game today. I'm assuming today's not the first game. But as far as, you know, students upholding the, you know, guidelines and all of those things, because I have gotten, you know, some comments that people have seen that they haven't seen people upholding the guidelines and have asked- and have asked questions directly about that and then say, comparing that to being in person in class and how they're different. And so I just wanted to get an update on that.
Yeah, I have not gotten any of those reports. I would just, you know, would like to get those so I know where it is. So we can have people out there, we can check with our coaches, check with our athletic folks, and also check with our health and safety office. So if there's a specific, you know, issue with a specific team or school, I'd like to know that so we can actually follow up with that group.
Okay, I'll try to find who sent me that message and figure out where it is.
Yeah, because that's one of the important things. You know, we have a private school in the area. I just read that article today that, you know, some of their students went to a large party and now, you know, they're trying to follow up to find it. So it's important, you know, and I think we've all said this, that for our student athletes and their coaches to make sure that we're being responsible, because if we're not responsible and there's a problem, you know, for the most part, they're going to be out for two weeks and not be able to play if there is an issue. So we want to make sure that they're definitely following the rules.
Right, agreed, agreed. Okay, and then I wanted to follow up about videos. As I shared this morning in our meeting, I have gotten some reports about students being required to be on video in class and the concerns associated with that. And then you, you did give us an update this morning, which I very much so appreciated, about the lessons that are being recorded, or maybe it was Dr. Williams Woods. But I'm wondering if we can get an update on that because I think that that will answer some people's concerns. I thought it was, it answered concerns about privacy, but also allow, I think, parents a flexibility to get some of that information that they've been requesting.
Right, so we have a process that we're looking at in terms of the Google Classroom, how if the teacher pins a second, Google Classroom can record that, which will not show the students on the other side of that. So we're working through that process and providing some detailed instructions to our teachers on how to process that, working with our technology support team members on helping make sure teachers have that set up so that, you know, we can then record what the teacher is saying and then be able to post that so that that can be accessed whenever a kid needs it. There are some lessons, as Dr. McWilliams Woods said this morning, that kids, that our teachers are going to be also developing and posting. So they're in a library that kids will be able to take. I am, I'm still working on trying to get some additional information. I know there was a person who called in about paper packets. There are some principals following up because I'm not sure that's the guardian of those students and we need to talk to the guardian. And we are encouraging our students, I mean, I know this is difficult for our parents and we are in a difficult situation, but we're in the middle of a pandemic. And so we're really trying to get people to use the technology because, believe it or not, all of these kids now and often to, you know, future years are going to be using that technology, I think, more and more. So if there is a, you know, a person that has some needs, we have our connectors that we're rolling out, who are staff members from APS, who will be able to help them, not just with, you know, tying them in or linking them to resources that we have to deal with the technology or the internet access, but also some of the other issues, you know, that they may be having, partnering with United Way and the 211 system to get to other issues that families may be having while we're doing this online, you know, online instruction. And I don't know if Dr. McWilliams Woods has anything to add to what the curriculum folks are doing, you know, in terms of recordings and lessons.
Yeah, in addition to, teachers can do the recording of their classrooms. We also wanted to provide other resources for teachers to be able to grab videos. For example, our math curriculum already has digital videos for all of the units already in the system. So our, our learning specialists and our instructional coaches are, and some of our teachers are going through the library of all those videos and lining it up with our teaching timeline that we use in the district so that it'll be real easy for teachers to grab the video that goes with the week's lessons that we're all doing across the district. We're also going to post those on our family website. That's our Learning 2021 website that parents could also, and students could go, either watch a video again if they didn't understand a certain concept or if they missed it and it's not, a video isn't posted in a Google Classroom. They also know there's one other place to find it. We also are bringing in teachers who are taping kind of standard district videos that we'll also post for teachers to be able to use. And that way, that'll be much easier just to kind of have some standard videos they can just grab and post, especially in the areas of math and literacy. The last thing that I wanted to kind of announce and share is that we're expanding our Akron After Hours Support Center, where last spring, we had a help desk that was manned through the afternoon and that evening hours. But now we're making that more robust, where we're bringing in academic teachers and counselors and more of that connector kind of role too, after, noon, and into the evening hours so that there will be a staff Monday through Thursday for families and students to be able to call if they have a tech issue, if they need some tutoring and they're stuck on an assignment, if they need, if the family, if we find they're having some basic need issues, Carla Chapman is working out so that we can have kind of a direct line to the United Way 211 basic resources that they have to be able to resolve some of those barriers to help the students end up kind of engaging with their lessons. Real excited about that and expand, that huge kind of expansion of the After Hours support that we'll be able to provide.
Yes, thank you very much, Dr. McWilliams Woods and Dr. James. Dr. McWilliams Woods, you answered my last question about the After Hour support and what support was being offered for families. So thank you very much. I think that it's very important that we get that information out there. I, I know I'm not the only board member that have gotten comments, either inbox messages or phone calls about how frustrated they are and how they don't know how to do the math or, you know, how some of it might be confusing and they need some support at five or six or seven o'clock. And so I think that that is helpful.
Our family website right now, there's a help line that can be reached and a form that you can connect where somebody will reach out to anybody who needs help. But the After Hours Support Center should be launched that first week of October. We just posted for the positions and that'll be full blown. So there still is a help desk and a help line on our Learning 2021 website that's all about our remote learning right now.
Great, Ms. Autry?
Thank you, just a follow up to that. You mentioned Monday through Thursday. Do you know what the hours will be for that at this time or is that still developing?
Right now, we're looking at four o'clock till eight o'clock is our goal. It may be seven, it may go till eight. We'll see how much kind of traffic we get at those later hours. We were hoping to do Saturday. We've applied for some grants to look to see whether we could add some Saturday hours. But we'll definitely right now be able to do that Monday through Thursday.
And the existing support, those hours are, is for the record?
Those hours are pretty much those same hours, although you can fill out the form that says, hey, I need support, that could be at two o'clock in the morning and somebody will help you in the morning. You know, that, that's really pretty much open at any time.
Great, thank you, Ms. Autry, Dr. Hall?
Yeah, I said, I think, I think it's a quick question, may not be, but, you know, in light of the school report card, I was thinking about, I was linking this conversation to that as related to attendance absenteeism. How are we tracking attendance during this time? Again, I know it's early, you know, but I know that, you know, to Dr. Akbar's point, he's right, yeah, you know, it's multiple, multiple members have gotten questions around, comments around like, well, I can't be, you know, I'm a single parent, I work two jobs. Like, I can't be around and make sure that, like, my kid or kids are able to be online at certain times of the day. And it made, it made me wonder like how we're tracking attendance and, and, you know, yeah, I mean, I guess that's my question, I guess I was just worried about that.
We basically have three ways to primary base, but three overarching ways that we're taking attendance. The way that we've structured our remote learning this year compared to last spring is we're, we really are strongly encouraging all students to be connected during that live instruction during the day. The value of being able to connect with your faculty and your peers and to have that exchange of information, the richness that happens when you're all learning together, grappling with projects, we really want to drive everyone to the maximum extent to do that. Now, we also know that on a day-to-day basis, there's going to be disruptions to that where a student may need to be accessing their learning after hours or the next day to go back and kind of make up for something that they missed. So the way we structure the attendance is that teachers take, it's called a check-in, whether you can take attendance on whoever's in your Google Meet and that's kind of easy, the live instruction, you check who's there. But there's also a whole different, an assortment of lists of ways that students can demonstrate their presence through checking in with the teacher. And that could be by, maybe they weren't in the Google Meets, but they completed an assignment or they did a task that the teacher assigned in their Google Classroom for that day. And we keep attendance open for seven days so that teachers can kind of give credit if they find that a student was absent one day because their technology wasn't working, but they logged on at night and did the assignment later. The teacher can go back and update the attendance to show that they were present. If they give a big project through the week that's going to take multiple days to work on, they can give credit for that student working on the project for multiple days. So we call all of that check-ins, that that shows the attendance presence. Then the, then the, the other way is kind of looking at our digital reports and those are not all live yet, they'll be live later on this week. That we also can see the activity that, that, how many minutes a student takes, uses our literacy software and math software all by ready. And we're also providing that to school staff, both faculty and staff, to take a look at that because that's another way to demonstrate your presence by working in our digital instructional tools. So, so we're not looking, you know, it doesn't have to be just one way. It can be kind of multiple ways that you demonstrate your attendance.
All right, great, thank you. Any other questions or comments for the superintendent? If not, I just want to say too, I mean, when, the more we hear, you can certainly tell that a lot is going into this to get our kids back to school today. We do want to say welcome back to all of our students and we wish you the best. And we know this isn't ideal circumstan, these aren't ideal circumstances for you or your families. But we're here to, to work through all of this with you and to be there for you as a resource. I will say that, you know, having a freshman this year in Akron Public Schools, I've enjoyed and appreciated the communication that I've received, both via mail and via email from our son's school. And they are working on videos and, and being very proactive and reaching out and trying to address any challenges that we might have as parents before they become challenges. And there's a, a parent workshop that's getting ready to take place for us to teach parents how to do everything, again, from getting online with Home Access to accessing the resources on our Akron Public Schools website and how to read your, your kids' progress through Google Classroom. So it's been very hands-on and I've appreciated it as a parent. So thank you all for the work that you've put in into making sure that at least this first nine weeks goes as smoothly as possible, we appreciate it. I'm going to make my president's report very brief tonight. Just want to mention, I did follow up with a couple of folks today just to make sure that we have all of the evaluation comments turned in. And so we are going to move forward in scheduling the virtual in-person review for our superintendent and treasurer. And so you should be contacted fairly soon by staff to check in with you on your availability. Dr. Akbar and I needed to reschedule our meeting from last week to this week, so we will be following up with you soon on options for, around our superintendent's search as well as some board retreat follow-up items. I've had some phone calls with the Ohio School Board Association regarding our superintendent's search. And so we just have some information we'll put together and pass along to you and then we'll get some sense of direction from the board on how we'd like to proceed, both with, again, with the superintendent's search and our board retreat follow-up items. Treasurer's report?
Good evening, thank you, Mr. President. I have three items tonight. The first is in regards to our annual audit. On September 1st, we had the Audit Entrance Conference Committee. And just a quick review, as much for the board and public, this was a quick overview of the review of financial statements. Who is responsible, both the audity and auditor? We have to issue an expenditure of federal funds. We talked about the number and quantity of federal funds that are going to receive testing, both internal and compliance controls, both on financial and our board policies. And then we go through any schedule of management letter comments and those kind of things from previous years to talk through. We also receive an in-depth and separate audit because of our size and because we are quantified as an information technology site or ITC. We do go through a separate audit for that. So stay tuned and to follow along with the theme of technology, we've set up some virtual, some VPN access and some secure shared folders and how we're communicating with the auditor's office. So thankfully, we haven't missed a beat there. The second item, as you've, you've heard Dr. McWilliams Woods and Superintendent James talk a little bit about legislation. So I'll lump a few things into this legislation and season. Even though typically, as we enter a potential General Assembly lame duck timeframe, a lot doesn't happen, but a lot is happening. Obviously, with Senate Bill 358 is a Senate bill, education bill. It's got a lot of things wrapped up and I know Dr. McWilliams Woods talked a lot about. But it could also become a vehicle for vouchers. So I know a couple of board members, both on Finance Committee and just personal interest, have wanted to participate in that conversation and get communications out. We will let you know what moves here in the next few weeks. So pay attention, special attention to Senate Bill 358, conversation around vouchers. And then finally, House Bill 305, the Fair School Funding Plan, which I know you've heard from me about this for almost three years now. This week was going to be some announcements, it's got moved, it got moved to next week. But substitute House Bill 305 is going to be dropped next week. There's going to be some press releases and there will be in-person testimony. I will likely be there early next week representing Akron. And there may be an opportunity for a board member to testify in the near future as well. But substitute House Bill 305 is a really exciting opportunity. The Speaker of the House, Bob Cupp, one of the co-authors of 305, is the, one of the architects behind this and wants to make it a priority of the is one of the architects behind this and wants to make it a priority of the General Assembly prior to January 1st. So a lot happening in this legislation season. And then finally, a reminder that Finance Committee is Monday evening. And the reason I just want to throw that reminder out is we're going to be taking a deeper dive into budget versus actual. I know that may not resonate as a really exciting time, but what we really do need to take a look at is what our budget looks like in terms of a $500 and $600 million organization and what the realities of a COVID and virtual type opening are like. And I want to be very transparent, we've been reporting on this about every two weeks. So we will bring back messages from the Finance Committee to the Board Committee as a whole to talk about where we're running over budget, under budget, what CARES Act funding is supporting. And those are really important messages as we think about restating our forecast, as we head into a potential levy season and how to make decisions about that. And a lot of people are depending on some of the guidance information that we review in Finance Committee. So just a quick plug there. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the treasurer? All right, committee reports, legal contracts and board policy?
Yes, sorry, I'm trying to push mute or unmute. So, legal contracts and board policy met last week, and we discussed some policies that we will be presenting today for first reading as well as gave an update on two policies that I'll go over briefly. And then we will talk through the policies that are up for first reading today. And so the first policy that we are developing, that we talked through, which is the building and facility naming policy, which we asked CFO Pendleton to refer to our counsel Fido about researching if there's any areas in which we've missed in that policy so we can get that wrapped up within the next month. And so we're on track to have that presented to you for any final feedback and that final reading, because we've already had a first reading and then we're in the second reading phase currently and editing. So that will happen hopefully within the next month and come to the board for finalization after we get further feedback from Diana Fido and the administration, once we get those additions, if there's any. The next board policy that we are updating is the racial equity policy. And I don't know if Bruce wants to say anything about this, but he and I have gone back and forth about it. And in my opinion, I think we are in a really good place. We have just one or two things that we want to fine-tune a little bit, and by the end of the week, get that out to the administration and to the board so you'll at least know where we are with that. And I don't know if you want to say anything about that, Mr. Alexander, but I did go over in our meeting the areas, the major bucket areas that we covered. I don't want to have to repeat all of that today, but if you have any additional comments on that before I go to the first readings, Mr. Alexander, I want to turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Akbar. Yes, I want to say that I am proud and happy at the work Dr. Akbar and I have done together. This was a joint venture to put this policy together, and I thought it was, I'm very pleased with the work that we did together, how we worked together on this. I mean, we, I'm very pleased, I think all of you will be pleased as well once you see it. And so we're saying that we are planning on getting that out to you guys at the end of this week so everybody can get a chance to start reading it and reviewing it. If you have any questions, comments or concerns, you can ask them to us. And we are trying to fine-tune a couple pieces this weekend, and once we do that, it'll come out. But I do want to thank Dr. Akbar because he, we worked really good together as a team, and I thought that was very, very good to put this policy together. So thank you, Dr. Akbar.
No, thank you. I actually said in our contract, legal contract and board policy meeting that unfortunately Bruce couldn't make it to, how much I love working with you. So, yeah, this has been awesome. So with that being said, you know, we'll move on from the love fest and go into the first readings. But, yeah, brother, Mr. Alexander is, has been really great to work with on these policies. And so there are multiple policies, I've lost track of how many, how many there are for first readings. Today, you have it in your board notes, but I'll go over each one really quickly, and then you can read the specifics. And so the committee in our next meeting will be going over each one of these for the second reading and making alterations and edits. And so if you have any after receiving, reading these, the first reading, please get that to Bruce or myself, or feel free to attend our very fun meetings, which will be next month. So the first revised policy, again, all of these are revisions, and there's one new policy based off the pandemic that I'll also read. But the revised policy 5200 on attendance, you'll notice that that policy adds information on what happens in a virtual classroom, which was not there previously, and you'll also see a few other updates. But I wanted to point that out specifically so you can read it. Revised policy 5610.03, which is emergency removal of students. Revised policy 5610, which is removal, suspension, expulsion and permanent expulsion of students from the district. Revised policy 5611, which is due process rights for our students. Revised policy 6325, which is procurement for our federal grants and funds. New policy, which we do not have currently, which is 8450.01, which covers protective facial coverage during a pandemic and epidemic event, which is very timely, as I'm sure you all can understand. And you'll read that and provide us some feedback there. And then the rest are other revised policies, 3216, staff dress and grooming, as well as 4216, which is also staff dress and grooming. We also have revised policies, 5511 on dress and grooming, 8420 on emergency situations at schools, and finally, revised policy 8500, which is on food service. So you have those policies there for you to review the edits that were made and the revisions and get any feedback to Bruce or myself, should you have them. And that will conclude our report.
Thank you. So basically, no report from legal contracts and board policy. It's all quiet over there.
It's so quiet.
Yeah. All right, finance and capital management?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be brief as our treasurer actually touched upon most of what we covered in our Finance Committee meeting on the 31st. I do want to just express appreciation that our treasurer did have the opportunity to share about House Bill 305 with the new freshmen and newer legislators in the House this past week. So just appreciating that we had that representation there. And then also, you know, he talked a little bit about the Ed Choice vouchers. Very interesting article that he did share with the committee by the Cincinnati Inquirer that spoke a little bit about the Ed Choice vouchers and the fact that in fiscal year 1819, the state deducted approximately $250 million for those vouchers. But they did an analysis and found that 88% of the public schools affected by that are actually, have better state testing results than those private schools in which we are using the vouchers for. So I just found that interesting in that article and just wanted to share that as well. One of the other questions that I had during the Finance Committee meeting is why public school systems are responsible for busing Ed Choice students? And apparently it's because of our, you know, being well-established infrastructure that we are the entity for that. But there is, I guess, an additional bill being introduced that may require public school districts to transport these students on yellow buses, eliminating the public transit option. So moving forward, there might be, you know, a need for testimony regarding this as we are getting the proper compensation at this time to do the transport that we do do. So with that being said, I will turn it over to my fellow committee member regarding the analysis.
I was just still fixing on the transportation that doo-doo, that was, that caught my, that made me laugh. So a little humor tonight, as I know that I have diaper changing in my future tonight. So anyway, yeah, so to add to what Ms. Autry talked about and sort of echo some of Mr. President's earlier comments, you know, you know, there was a pre-audit meeting that was scheduled with the state auditors. And we, you know, he basically reviewed with us, you know, the information that is typically shared at a pre-audit meeting, you know, and then sort of next, we sort of talked through, we reviewed the March 23rd, 2020 resolution that the board passed and where we voted to continue payroll for certain classifications of employees during school closures due to COVID. So basically, at this time, you know, the district is, you know, plans to continue paying all employees under the assumption that this will be a temporary shutdown. So, you know, all these employees will have duties as school begins. You know, and just, you know, one thing to note, you know, the auditors do require that services must be rendered in order for employees to receive compensation. So to clarify any questions that folks may have about that. And then kind of the final bucket was really sort of taking this through a unit level analysis lens. You know, as Mr. President pointed out, you know, there's some additional sort of tools. For example, the Forecast Five tool, which you've probably heard us talk about in these meetings before, that are utilized to visualize certain aspects of data, both financials or demographic as well for the district. You know, and so, and so this tool also is important because, as mentioned, it's a forecasting tool. So it's also going to be instrumental in helping us to forecast and sort of examine, you know, our budget deficit in the coming year. And then we also use that Forecast Five tool, you know, to talk about, you know, echoing sort of the earlier comments about racial equity. You know, one of the things that we discussed was sort of really talking about equity and finance, equity and how we distribute resources throughout the district. You know, and so, and so we began that conversation looking deeper into the high school spend and then focusing, and then within the high school spend, we were looking at special ed spend as well, even deeper within the high school bucket. So we looked at some of the things such as per people spend per high school. We even, we looked at breakdown of special education spending per pupil as well. And I know folks who follow this know that there's a lot of opportunities, you know, at the federal level to further improve that funding. We also sort of talked about the creation of multiple dashboards, but one that would include, that would really be an equity, financial equity dashboard as well, which we're still sort of thinking through the various pieces, parts of what would be included in that. And then we also talked through, you know, you know, there were various, there were several reports, you know, that we walked through using the Forecast Five tool. So imagine a forecasting tool where you can sort of filter by, you know, by a plethora of categories. So we looked at, you know, like, you know, school race, ethnicity. We looked at low-income students with disabilities. We looked at the ELL breakdown. We looked at average salary and FTE trends. You know, and so at the next meeting, amongst the things that, you know, that Ryan talked about, that is focusing on next meeting, one of the things that came out of this last bit was really wanting to take a closer look at instructions costs, really overlaying that with teacher seniority. So, so, you know, a lot of times we talk about, you know, from equity standpoint, are we spending more, this as an example, right, are we spending more to educate students? Is that a function of, is it solely a function of, and it's not, by the way, but this is an ample, your question would be, is it solely a function of the fact, are we spending more in certain schools because the teachers have more seniority? So is it, so the function, is it really a function of the future seniority? Or are there other factors that we can be and should be looking at? So that's sort of where we're going with this, you know, especially as relates around equity and finance. And so I'm really looking forward to the next steps in that journey and certainly invite all of you to join us for that next public meeting. So thank you, Mr. President, and I will see the floor back to you.
Thank you so much. I just want to echo too on something Diana was pointing out about the Cincinnati Inquirer article. I mean, it really, I was really taken aback by the statewide numbers on the analysis that they did for the voucher schools and in particularly locally. And I just received an email from, from someone recently who made a comment or a reference about Akron Public Schools that I thought to myself, you know, this is the, this is the type of article that I need to link back in that email. There was only one school in the Akron area where students who are taking advantage of the vouchers and enrolling out to other schools, there was only one school in this area that those students are going to that were not outperforming. And so while the grass may always seem greener on the other side, I mean, when it comes to academic achievement and performance on state standardized tests, Akron Public Schools is still outperforming even those schools that by and large that people are taking vouchers to. So just something for us to keep. And it's backed up then when you think about the presentation that we received from Ms. Woods on the state report card. There's, and several meetings that we've had recently where some of that same data is sussed out a little bit. So it's not to say that we're exactly where we want to be, but we're certainly moving in the right direction and we're certainly faring better than sometimes people think that we are. So anything else or any questions for finance and capital management? All right, instructional policy and student achievement?
Dr. McWilliams Woods gave most of the instructional policy report, so I will toss it to Ms. Mansfield if she has anything extra to add. Thank you. So I just wanted, yeah, she did a great job of covering a lot, and then the superintendent jumped in there too with a lot that we cover. So we do a second meeting that's just a quick phone call update. So we did have that this month and our, just this last week. And one of the things that just wanted to point out, we do have a presentation at Cube this year by Erin Markovic, who is part of that Forecast Five team for the district. So anyone who's participating in Cube who wants to take a look at that, just encourage our fellow board members and congratulations to Erin for getting that opportunity to speak at a national conference and represent the district. That's fantastic. And then just to make sure that I'm on my toes, Dr. McWilliams Woods was letting me know, even as we speak, there's been an update since earlier today when I emailed about the parent videos. So now there's a two-click option to get to the videos that help parents. So if you go to the Akron Public School website and you go under the Learning 2020, 2021, it's really easy. I was able to do it in just a few seconds on my phone to take a look as parents, you know, we had a good discussion at our house just about even if you're relatively computer savvy, this is a whole new world for parents. And for those people who aren't computer savvy, it's, it's an unbelievable task. The kids are obviously going to be better, right? I mean, my kids program my phone, forget it. I just hand it to them and say, just go. So when it comes to the kids, they're going to adapt much quicker, but parents want to keep up with what's going on. So two clicks, you could be there, you click on the Learning 202021, then you click on technology and it takes you right to where those videos are. So encourage folks to So encourage folks to take a look at those. I'm sure we're working on ways to better get that out to the community. I saw a few presentations online. I'm trying to share them when I see them. I know that Hire did a walkthrough. Mr. Bender does a fantastic job of going live and he's not singing right now, so I'm kind of missing those, but he, they do do their morning announcements and they broadcast those live on Facebook Live so parents can follow along. And he also did a presentation on, on getting on as a parent. So please take a look at those and also keep reaching out. There have been a few things, I want to thank senior staff for all their help. There have been a few parents that have reached out in different ways and our senior staff is amazing. And I know that all I have to do is text them, call them. You know, sometimes I end up making the superintendent get involved and sometimes you don't. And they can just solve a problem really simply. I always encourage people go straight to your principal first, ask the counselors, give them a chance to, to get those schedules squared around because it does take a couple of days. It was a big, deep breath today when we hit September 14th because I remember back in July when we picked, you know, we heard, first heard this date, that this would be the date that we were all back in school or in August. And so I'm glad everyone's back and thanks everyone for, for hanging in there with us while we all learn this together.
Thank you, Ms. Mansfield. Any questions for instructional policy and student achievement? If not, I just have one more thing to add. I forgot from my president's report, I did ask for an update and I know Ms. Whitfield is working or will be working with our student representatives to the board to also get them back now that we are back virtually. So just wanted to let you know that we're also, that's in, in process. So they'll be back with us shortly and we can't wait to have them around the table. All right. At this point, there's no unfinished business that needs to be updated today. We do have an item for new business and Mr. Alexander and I spoke and then he sent some information today to the board for your review and he is going to, I'm going to hand it over to him for a brief discussion on that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to give you guys some information and update on OSBA trustees. Blue Board members, I'm not sure if you were listening maybe last year or maybe heard last year, Mrs. Mansfield, who was our trustee and representation of Akron Public Schools, mentioned that we need to be alert because possibly APS could lose their current spot on the trustees. And so I remember that, you know, playing in my head all the time, back in my mind, you know, you need to worry, ask questions about this, think about this, find out what's going on. So what I did is, let me back up. So currently we as Akron Public Schools have an automatic, be at automatic place on the trustees right now. And, but we got to be careful. And in the Constitution, and I sent you all today, the link in that in Article Eight, Section Six, and I want to read that to you so you can get a little bit of what I'm talking about, better idea. It says, Section Six says, "The representative of the Board of Trustees from each of the six districts with the largest pupil population enrollment shall be appointed to the Board of Education for such district, a term of one year," which we currently sit on their board each year. One of, one of us who is assigned to that, the trustees sit on for one year. And last year we did allow, last couple of times we allowed Mrs. Mansfield to sit on too, because we thought the continuity was good for that. So what they're saying is the six largest school districts get an automatic bid. Currently we are number six, but Olentangy School District is right behind us. And if they surpass us, that means we get kicked off and we don't get an automatic bid on OSBA trustees. That means Olentangy would take our place. Now, I don't want them to take our place because there's some history that I have gotten from OSBA that Akron Public Schools has been participating, have been on the trustees, but not just on the trustees, but have been participating since the 1970s. And so we've been actively participating. We've even had one of our board members serve as the president of OSBA in the past. So we've been really active as a trustee. And so in saying all these this year, I don't want us to lose our position. And so therefore I did talk to Rick Lewis, okay, the executive director, and tried to pick his brain a little bit and talk about what we could possibly do. Now, one of the things that we could do is we could write a resolution to go to the General Assembly, which is in November. But in that resolution, we need to have some good information as to why we are going to address the General Assembly. Now, for that to happen, it has to occur and we have to have that resolution in by the end of this month, which is not a long, not much time. So we'd have to do a lot of work in order to try to get that taken care of. So I wanted to make sure I brought this to your attention so we can possibly discuss what we like to do. But what I did is I did come up with a couple of options too, and after talking to Rick, that we could do. One is that we could go ahead and try to put together something real quick, get it ready for the end of this month to get it to OSBA so that they could get this on the agenda for the General Assembly in November. That's one option. Two is that we could, which I have, I will be having a phone call with the regional director, Reno, to speak about this here, as well as the president-elect, to speak about this as well. And I'm going to call another, a longtime trustee, Suzie Larson, who has been on the board a long time, and they will give us some, some more support, some of my guidance. But in speaking with them and Hope was speaking to them, the regional director, which was Reno, who could probably give us an appointment and we could be appointed from the region to OSBA trustee. And that will give us a seat at the table. The only concern I have, and I want all of your input on this here, is do we want to move in that direction and allow them to have us in, give us an appointment from the regional? Or do we want to try to get some type of resolution to address the General Assembly to try to see if we can structure it somehow or they would structure it and look at the Constitution or the bylaws and say, hey, we can look at this in a different way? Because they did look at it, I believe in, in the early seventies where Akron Public Schools did put this on the, the General Assembly as well. It got some votes, but it didn't pass. And so I just don't want us in, for the future board members and our future board to not have an opportunity to sit at that, that, that table with the Board of Trustees and be left out. So what I'm asking all of you guys is to, your guidance and direction as to, should I work on, or we work on a resolution for the end of September? Or would we think it's better for us to wait and do that resolution next year at the General Assembly when hopefully we can be present physically to address the General Assembly and hopefully allow them, if that happens or Olentangy passes us, that we can get appointed by the region and then hopefully address all this. So I'm asking all of your, all of your, for all of your input. I know it's a lot to digest. You don't have to answer anything now, but I think we need to figure out because I don't want the future of Akron Public Schools to not be at the table at the OSBA trustees. And I don't want there to be other regional directors or other regional board members that say, hey, Akron Public Schools has been maybe on there for a long time, let's put somebody else on there. So those are my concerns and I'll, I'll leave it at that and you guys can give me your input as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And as we open it up to questions and comments and feedback from the board, I just want to say first of all, a quick thanks, both to Lisa Mansfield, who as Mr. Alexander said, was our trustee last year and started really putting this on our radar for the work that she did and Bruce for the work that you're doing now. I think this is extremely important, especially from a policy perspective. When you think about the fact that there are districts in the state of Ohio and, but there are very few large urban districts, I think it's important that those larger districts do still have a seat at the table from a policy perspective. So I, you know, personally, I would, I would favor a resolution from my perspective. Try and move the needle in terms of making sure that our larger urban districts are at the table when it comes to OSBA again, from a policy perspective. So that's my personal thought, but I know Ms. Mansfield, I want to hand it over to you as our trustee from last year, and I know you had some experience with this, so please.
Sure. I appreciate it. Bruce, whatever you need, I'd be happy to help whether we decide as a group to go forward this year, next year. One of the things that confuses me is Toledo has two representatives and has, and that's because I think they represent the region and they represent their district. So that's one of those things where it is possible to have people that serve and they do a great job. I like my Toledo counterparts. They, they're very good at speaking highly of their district. I usually come back and say, we need to brag more because they brag so much. So I love the representation that our district brings and I think that it's really important that we have that voice. Here's my concern, and this was what I brought up last year and I think the year before because, you know, I started, the writing was really on the wall and then they started rewriting some parts of the, of the bylaws and tried to be on a committee that would help to kind of guide that discussion so that we could stay on. And it wasn't successful. And in reading the past bylaws, I saw where other large urbans had fallen off. So as Canton got smaller or Youngstown got smaller and there were pleas for them to stay on and they weren't successful. So there, there were not concessions made so they could stay. So I'm concerned that, yes, there are 600 districts and not very many of them look like us and not a whole lot of them think like us either. And, you know, having that equity piece and having the, the strong representation that our board brings of diversity is, is not necessarily representative of all districts in Ohio. So I love having our voice there. And so anything that I can do to help, I'd be happy to. You know, I think we should go at it both ways. I think we should try to get a resolution passed and I think that if we need to be regional representatives, that we go after that too.
Agreed. Agreed. Those are good comments. And it's even more important when you look at the fact that many of those districts, when their policy issues or concerns that they have too, as well, from public schools. When the state wants to have input on House Bill 305, they look to Akron Public Schools. It seems to me that, you know, that it's important that there be a mechanism for us and there might be some, some power in uniting some of those folks that, you know, like Canton, who may no longer have a sort of permanent seat on the Board of Trustees to gather some support from those other districts to approach OSBA with perhaps even a joint resolution of some sort. And so to the extent, Bruce, that I can help in reaching out to the other boards as well that may be affected by this, please let me know, our urban counterparts. Other questions and comments?
I do have a comment and I, I believe that we can, we can remain on the board. I think our representation is very important on the, on the board because people do look to Akron for a lot. And OSBA will be willing to help us with kind of putting some of this together. I just want us to have our wording and our information together from our part of what we want to say and then, but so it'll be well enough to go down to the General Assembly. And so my, my thought, my personal thought is, unless you guys disagree, is to, let's start working on this now and maybe because it's a short deadline for a couple of weeks, maybe let's start working on this now, drafting our information, putting what we want to put together, maybe getting it to them to wordsmith it and then making sure that we get it on the agenda for the General Assembly next year. And hopefully next year there will be, we will be able to be there in person and then we can speak to that at the General Assembly during that meeting. So that's my, my, my thought. And but again, I want everybody's input. This is not my, my deal. This is for Akron Public Schools now and for Akron Public Schools in the future.
Thank you. And I just noticed that Valerie rejoined. Valerie, did you miss much of that conversation? I did not notice that you had dropped off.
No, I got most of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there questions for Bruce? If not, I like the plan, Bruce.
Okay. Thank you. And please, any input you guys have, look at the Constitution. I will be sending you some more information, some little bit of more historical information that I received. I requested and they did send it to me. And so I'll obviously send it out to you all as well. I didn't want to get everybody inundated by all this stuff and get confused, but I wanted to make sure that we knew this part first and then we can look at some history and maybe that can help us as well.
Thank you. Time then. There is a need to recess into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G3, to meet with board legal counsel to discuss disputes involving the board and or the school district that are the subject of pending or imminent court action. And Section 121.22G4, situations or bargaining sessions with employees concerning compensation and other terms and conditions of employment.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Alexander and a second, I believe, by Ms. Autry. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
This is Mansfield.
Yes.
This is McKittick.
Yes.
Dr. Akbar.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Dr. Hall.
Aye.
Thank you.
For the benefit of the public, we're going to exit this meeting for a brief recess into executive session. We will return from executive session. One item to consider following executive session, so be back with you shortly. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome back. This is the regular meeting for the Akron Public Schools Board of Education for Monday, September 14th, 2020. We're just returning from executive session and we do have one item for consideration before this board, Resolution 20-128, a tentative agreement between the Akron Board of Education and the Ohio Association of Public School Employees Local 689. At this point, we'll entertain a motion for that resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Ms. McKittick and a second from Mr. Alexander. Any comments, questions or discussions on this item? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call, please.
This is McKittick.
Yes.
Dr. Akbar.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Dr. Hall.
Aye.
This is Mansfield.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Being mindful of the jello that is awaiting Dr. James, we will entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion and a second. We are adjourned. Have a good evening.
Don't want to hear it. Everyone is jello.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.